The inaugural meeting is hereby called to order. I hereby appoint Jade Fontan Tanigal as temporary county clerk. Are the credentials of the council members in order?
The credentials, the meeting has filed a report which shows that the credentials of the council members are in order and the vote of office has been given.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Boluson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaliu?
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaneshero?
Aye.
Councilmember Kooli?
Present.
Councilmember Coles?
Here.
Present, present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are no objections. The agenda is approved. The floor is now open for nominations for council chair.
I nominate Mel Raposo for council chair.
Second. Any further nominations? If not, nominations are closed. Any discussion? All those in favor of Mel Raposo for council chair, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and Mel Raposo is elected council chair. Congratulations. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you for that. The floor is now open for nominations for council vice chair.
I nominate Kipukai Kooli for council vice chair.
Second.
Any further nominations for council vice chair? If not, all those in favor of Kipukai Kooli for council vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I say aye. Kipukai Kooli is elected council vice chair. Clerk, you have the next item, please.
The second is resolution number 2025-01, motion appointing the county clerk of the county of Kauai.
Move to approve?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 2025-01. Any discussion? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Boluson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaliu?
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaneshero?
Aye.
Councilmember Kooli?
Aye.
Council Chair Posen?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
There are no objections. I will call a recess at this time so we can swear in the county clerk. The, also have a... The county clerk has submitted a letter appointing Linda Yoshioka as deputy county clerk. He cannot be here today due to illness.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Hawaii?
The Constitution of the State of Hawaii.
And the Charter of the County of Kauai?
The Charter of the County of Kauai.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Faithfully discharge my duties?
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As county clerk of the county of Kauai?
As county clerk of the county of Kauai.
To the best of my ability.
I'll call me back to order. Clerk, the next item, please.
Chair next item is resolution number 2025-02, resolution adopting the rules of the Kauai County Council for the organization of committees and the transaction of business.
Move to approve?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 2025-02. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, may we move on?
Councilmember Boluson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaliu?
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaneshero?
Aye.
Councilmember Kooli?
Aye.
Council Chair Posen?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no.
Thank you. With that, next item?
Next item is resolution number 2025-03, resolution relating to the appointment of the chairpersons, vice chairpersons, and members of the several standing committees of the Kauai County Council.
Move to approve?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 2025-03. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Boluson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaliu?
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaneshero?
Aye.
Councilmember Kooli?
Aye.
Council Chair Posen?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The last item is communication, C2025-01, communication from the county clerk designees under the council informational purposes, appointment of Linda Yoshioka as deputy county clerk.
Move to receive?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to receive communication, C2025-01. Any further discussion? Any objections? So ordered, clerk, any further business?
Chair, no further business.
If there are no objections, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all for being here. Moving to speed in the hall at one o'clock. Thank you all.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Jan Tenbergen-Kate. Welcome to the twenty, by my calculation, inauguration of the Kauai County Council. A few fewer years for the prosecuting attorney's office. We're about to start our procession. We'll let the last few people take their seats, and then we'll begin. Okay. We'll start our procession today with Kumuhula Troy Lazaro and Kumuhula Sabra Kaka. Could everyone please rise for the procession to order? Following the chanters is the Waimea High School Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, under the direction of Colonel Vincent Lee Freeman to you. Next is the Honorable Mayor Derek S.K. Calacan, escorted by his wife Monica Calacan. The honorable members of the county council, council chair Mel Raposo escorted by wife... Escorted by wife Patsy Raposo, council vice chair Kipukai Kooli, escorted by spouse Joseph Kariri. Council member Addison Boluson escorted by his mother Charmaine Boluson and Kila'ha. Council member Bernard P. Cavaliu Jr. escorted by his wife Regina Cavaliu. Council member Felicia Cowden escorted by son Matthew Cowden. Council member Fern Hollen escorted by her brother Ryan O'Brien. Council member Errol Kaneshero escorted by wife Gwyneth Kaneshero. The Honorable Chief Judge Randall G.B. Valenciano and county clerk Jane Fontan Tanigal escorted by husband Troy Tanigal. Unfortunately, Deputy County Attorney Linda Yoshioka could not be in attendance today. Next, we have the Honorable Prosecuting Attorney Rebecca V. Leake, escorted by husband Ryan Leake, First Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Keala Aionasiu, Second Deputy Prosecutor Attorney Leon Jackson Cruz Davenport III, and Deputy Prosecuting Attorneys Matthew Hidair Orakawa, Janati Bronstein, Anthony Kim Herndon, David Charles Luce, Tracy Jean Morikami, Nicole Michelle Alkeith, Henry Ramsey Ross III, Nancy Joan Reeves, David Mosotoshi Saiki, and David Michael Seaver. Also, part of the prosecutor's administration but not in attendance is Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Insigne Torzuzan Wim. Joining the procession is Pastor Matt Higa of New Hope, Kauai. Please remain standing for the presentation of cards. I apologize. There's some chanting coming. Please remain standing for the presentation of cards.
Color guard! Forward march! Work time, march! Color guard, pull! Left, face! Oh, see? Can you see? By the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars threw the perilous fight? For the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? When the rockets read clear, the muzzlers steaming air gave proof through the night That our flag was still there? Oh, see us that star-spangled banner we wear? For the land of the free and the home of the brave! Forward, march! Right, face! Forward, march!
Thank you. Please be seated. Before we start, and I apologize ahead of time for anybody I'm missing, but among federal state representatives present today are Michael DeHillig on behalf of Senator Brian Schatz, Brennan Cavaliu on behalf of Representative Jill Tokioke, Dana Hazelton on behalf of Governor Josh Green, Senate President Ron Koche, Representative and Majority Leader Dee Morikawa, Representative Luca Ebsen, Maui County Councilwoman Keani Rollins Fernandez, and Maui County Councilmember Gabe Johnson, and we thank them for the kind resolution of congratulations that they presented this morning. William Arakaki, Vice Chair of the Hawaii State Board of Education, State Missile Range Facility Captain Brett Stevenson, Pacific Range, Pacific Missile Range Facility Technical Director Emeritus Robert Kay, former Kauai County Councilmember Maxine Correa, former county council member Bob Yotsuda, former state senator and county council member Gary Hoosier, former mayor and county council member Joanne Yukimura, former mayor Mary Ann Kusaka, and former state representative Nina Marita. It would be appropriate to applaud those guys, man. I'd like to call on Pastor Matt Higa.
Aloha, Kako. Let's pray, holy Kako. Father, we come before you in the mighty powerful name of your Son Jesus. We ask for your presence here. We ask for your grace, your aloha. We thank you, Lord, for these great leaders that we're honoring today. But most of all, Lord, we ask for your wisdom, your guidance, your protection, and your love, that all of us here will sense the Kako Allah, your sacred Allah. We ask this in Jesus' name and everyone's name. Amen.
Please welcome the Honorable Chief Judge Randall G.B. Valenciano to administer the oath of office. If I can have the council members' rights? You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I?
Aye, Felicia Cowden.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Hawaii?
The Constitution of the State of Hawaii.
And the Charter of the County of Kauai?
And the Charter of the County of Kauai.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Faithfully discharge?
Faithfully discharge.
My duties as council member of the county of Kauai?
My duties as council member of the county of Kauai.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. If I can have Rebecca Leake, please stand? If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I?
Aye, Rebecca Leake.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Hawaii?
The Constitution of the State of Hawaii.
And the Charter of the County of Kauai?
And the Charter of the County of Kauai.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Faithfully discharge my duties?
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As prosecuting attorney?
As prosecuting attorney.
Of the county of Kauai?
Of the county of Kauai.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And one more time, I present to you the members of the Kauai County Council and the prosecuting attorney. To set the path for the new county council, the Honorable Council Chair Mel Raposo will deliver his inaugural address. Aloha, everybody. Before I get started, what a big handful those Kapla High School warriors bringing on the B.U.N. anthem show. That was awesome. And then also, you know, when people sing the National Anthem or Hawaii, when we, I hear some people like clap, and then some people are like, is it appropriate to clap? So how about a big hand for the color guard and for Melanie for doing an amazing rendition? Hello, friends, family, colleagues, and esteemed members of the Kauai community, and especially all of those dignitaries that were named earlier. Thank you for being here. Thank you for this profound honor and for the trust you have placed in me to serve you on this amazing county council. It is truly a privilege to stand here today entrusted with the responsibility of leading this council as its chair. I am filled with gratitude, humility, and a deep commitment to work alongside each and every one of these members to build a brighter future for our beloved island. To my fellow council members, I extend my heartfelt appreciation for your confidence in me. Vice Chair Kipukai Kooli, he will be serving as our chair of our Housing and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Council member Addison Boluson will be chairing our Planning Committee. Bernard Cavaliu will be chairing our Public Works and Veteran Services Committee. Felicia Cowden will be chairing our Public Safety and Human Services Committee. And Fern Hollen, new one. She'll be chairing our Parks and Recreation and Transportation Committee. Welcome to the Ohana Club. And Errol Kaneshero will be back, and he will be chairing our Finance and Economic Development Committee. You each bring a wealth of experience, passion, and dedication to this council. Together, we are a team united by a shared purpose and a shared vision for Kauai, and I am honored to serve alongside each and every one of you. I look forward to all we will achieve together as we work to fulfill the expectations of all of those that we represent, many of which are in here tonight or today. I also want to take a moment to recognize Mayor Derek Calacan. For his steadfast leadership and partnership with the council. Mayor Calacan, your commitment to collaboration and open communication inspires us all. We deeply appreciate your dedication to working together to find the solutions that serve the best interests of our residents here on Kauai. And this council looks forward to continuing our strong relationship of working together as we tackle the challenges that we have for our island. So thank you, Mayor. Additionally, I'd like to extend a heartfelt congratulations to prosecuting attorney Becky Leake on her successful reelection to the office of prosecuting attorney. She won her election in the primary, man. Lucky lady. Becky, your tireless dedication to justice and the safety of our community is deeply appreciated. We look forward to continuing to work with you as you bring your leadership and expertise to this vital role, ensuring that Kauai remains a safe and just place for all. Our mission is clear. We have a responsibility to tackle the critical issues facing our community with boldness and with resolve. Together, we will work aggressively, and I mean aggressively, to address the needs and challenges that matter most to our residents. In solid ways, the ongoing challenges with our landfill, to wastewater, and clean water initiatives, we are committed to implementing sustainable solutions that protect our environment and support the health of our island. Housing and homelessness are challenges that impact very hard of our community. We all know how vital it is to ensure that every person on this island has access to safe and affordable housing, and we will work tirelessly to find compassionate and practical solutions that offer stability, dignity, and hope to our residents. In addressing our roads and bridges, we know that safe, well-maintained infrastructure is essential not just for convenience, but for the well-being and connectivity of every single community member. We will prioritize improvements needed to create safe, efficient routes for our families, workers, and visitors alike. These are ambitious goals, but with collaboration and dedication, we will make strides that matter, and I am confident that working together, we will provide or bring positive change to Kauai and its people. We will build a community that we can powerfully pass on to the generations that follow us. To the people of Kauai, we hear you, and we are here for you, and we are committed to serving you with integrity, respect, and aloha. Thank you once again for the incredible opportunity to serve and for your trust in all of us, and I speak for all of us. Let us go forward together with hope in our hearts and strength in our unity as we work to create a thriving future for all. Mahalo, and may we continue to serve Kauai with aloha. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you, Mel. And we'd like to invite prosecuting attorney Rebecca Leake to deliver her inaugural address.
Aloha, Kako. I'd like to extend part mahalo to the mayor, Honorable Chief Judge Randall Valenciano, the Waimea High School color guard, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Kauai War Memorial Convention Hall, the Kauai Police Department, Pastor Matt Higa, Melanie Brune, Kumuhula Troy Lazaro, Kumuhula Sabra Kaka, Kaleo Cavaliu, Gerard's Quality Cleaners, Percy Sanchez, Kauai Cookie, Kauai Nursery and Landscaping, Paradise Grinds and Catering, and Hamar Simon. I'd also like to congratulate our new and returning council members. It is with humility and gratitude that I stand before you today as your prosecutor. I am honored to have the opportunity to continue to serve Kauai in this capacity. I want to extend a personal thank you to my family and the folks who came to support me today, especially my husband. Being prosecutor is a profound responsibility. Our team decides what criminal cases to charge and what sentences to recommend. Our decisions are guided by one overriding principle: justice. Justice is not a privilege for the few, but a right for all. It is the duty of those who hold the scales to ensure fairness, protect the innocent, and hold the guilty accountable regardless of their power or position. Our office's puliana is to protect the safety of our community. That work goes beyond just prosecuting crimes. It's about preventing them, offering support to victims, and ensuring that those who break the law... and ensuring that those who break the law are held accountable. Public safety isn't just a matter of reacting to crime. It's about working proactively with our law enforcement partners, strengthening our communities, and addressing the root causes of crime. I will continue to work closely with our dedicated law enforcement officers, local agencies, and community organizations to ensure that we are tackling these issues together as a united front. I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt thanks to my incredible team here in the prosecutor's office. It is their tireless dedication, their professionalism, and their unwavering commitment to justice that makes our office run. We're not just colleagues. We are a family, bound by our shared mission. Every case we handle, every victim we support, every legal challenge we face is met with hard work, intelligence, and integrity of this remarkable team. Without them, none of this would be possible. To our partners in law enforcement, thank you. Your bravery, dedication, and commitment to keeping our streets safe are the bedrock of our community's well-being. We are proud to work alongside you each and every day. Together, we will continue to strengthen our efforts, enhance public safety, and ensure that our justice system remains fair and accountable. And to the citizens of Kauai, thank you for your ongoing support. Whether you voted for me or not, your confidence in our shared vision for a safer, more just community means the world to me. I pledge to continue working on your behalf, listening to your concerns, and ensuring that the prosecutor's office serves the public with transparency and respect. As we move forward, I'm excited about the work ahead. The challenges we face are real, but I know that together, we are up to the task. With integrity at the forefront of everything we do, with responsibility to our community guiding our actions, and with the support of law enforcement, we will continue to build a future where every person feels safe, valued, and protected under the law. Thank you again for the honor of serving you. I look forward to continuing this important work together.
Thank you, Prosecutor Leke. Yesterday was Women Supporting Women Day nationwide. And it's interesting today that we have on the podium a female prosecutor and two female members of the county council. We've never had more than two female members of the county council. And I went this morning and looked at the pictures on the wall in the council offices to figure out when the previous ones were. And they included Maxine Correa and Joanne Ukimura starting in 1988, Shailini Sari and Joanne Ukimura in 2004, and Nadine Nakamura and Joanne Ukimura, once again, in 1996. I think that's it. No, 2010. So it's... We now at 28% female participation on our county council match the U.S. Congress. I'm not sure that's a good thing. That's what it is. I wanted to thank again everybody that... Becky, you took half of my speech. Everybody that participated, and I won't list them again in helping make this come off. And I'd ask you to... I'd ask Pastor Matt Higa to come for a closing word of prayer. And as he's coming up, I'll just say, you know, there are politicians. When you start them talking, you can't turn them off for four hours. I really appreciate Mel and Becky for their abbreviated remarks today.
I don't know whether you think Council Chair Mel Reposa or not, but usually the Kaku comes and does the invocation prayer in the beginning, and then it can run away, but now it does. Some of you have heard this. I have good friends sitting over here, Senator Ron Koche and Mayor Calacami along with Councilman Mel Reposa and Councilman Bernard Carvalho. You hear me say this all the time. You and I, all of us, we will never see eye to eye on every political issue what we must and have to have. And that will be our prayer, because whether we're all the way to the left or all the way to the right, sometimes being right doesn't make everything all right. But we don't contend to be formal with one another, respectful with another. That is the prayer. Because we never forget, Republican, Democrat, or other, we're still Americans. And we're special Americans. We're collines. Let us be by example. Amen. Just pray, Father, in the name of Jesus, may this be the best council team put together ever in the history of Kauai. Lord, I pray that no evil would come upon them, or any sickness visit their homes and their families. I pray you would keep them safe. I pray you cause them to be respectful and loving to one another and that these ideas and creative decisions and courageous decisions will make Kauai the best in the whole state of Hawaii, because your hand is upon them. We give you all the honor and glory, Lord. We ask this in Jesus' name, and everyone says it.
Thank you, Pastor Leke. This brings to a close our inaugural ceremony. Please remain seated during the recessional, which will be led by Kumuhula Troy Lazaro and Kumuhua Sabra Kauka, followed by people who I assume know the order in which they leave.